Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Stewart, do we have any agenda adjustments?
Mr. President, we do not.
All right. So this evening, as far as personnel achievements and student recognition?
We do not have any.
Okay. Any student discipline?
There is none.
All right. And as for academics, we have Ms. Stonaker going to do a presentation for us, right?
Yes, where do you want me to stand?
Up here's fine.
I don't think I need the microphone. I have a teacher voice. Oh, I do need to use the microphone. Feel like I'm here for the American Idol audition. So I'm here to do a presentation on the summer learning program and credit recovery that just concluded on Friday for the students. We had a cleanup day today for staff, and we did make an adjustment. We haven't done this before, but I talked with the staff at the high school, and since we did have this cleanup day, students who attended at the high school on Friday, we kept edgenuity open through the weekend because we had today. And we did have one student. I called parents on Friday to alert them to that, and then I went in on Sunday as well. And I checked to see who was still working, and I called parents again on Sunday. And we had a student who completed a full credit over the weekend, so that allowed them the opportunity. So some of the numbers, in ninth grade, there were 52 students who needed 68 and a half credits total. Twenty-one ninth graders attended earning 17 and a half credits. So credits can be earned, half credits for a semester or full credits for a year. Tenth graders, we had 62 students who needed 165 credits. Twenty-eight tenth graders attended needing and earning 40 and a half credits. Thirty-seven eleventh graders needed 112 credits. We had 21 eleventh graders who attended earning 24 credits. We had four seniors who needed to attend to graduate. One did attend earning a total of one credit, and she did graduate. She received her diploma. Yes, so that was great. So last year, we earned a total of 85 credits. This year, we earned a total of 83 credits. We had 28 full credits and 110 half credits. The great thing about earning the half credits is that opens up schedules, makes scheduling a lot easier because you have those semesters open, easier for scheduling. Last year in 2023, the highest daily attendance was 64 students. Average daily attendance for this first week was 57.25 students. We had six students who attended the entire four weeks who did not earn any credits. This year, our highly, our highest daily attendance was 61 students with an average daily attendance for the first week of 52.5. So it was a lower attendance. Two students who attended the entire four weeks did not earn any credits. As far as the middle school, we have a dwindling middle school interest. This year, we had 13 sign up on the forms program. And, oh, I got ahead of myself here. Of the two, 2024 summer credit recovery students, 23 of those students were considered chronically absent during the 2023-2024 school year. And to be chronically absent, that's 18 or more absences during the school year. And that was approximately one-third of the students who attended. Another 15 students had 10 to 18 absences during the school year, and those were just the ones who attended. That I had Marcy James, who is fantastic, by the way. She's one of the counselors up at the high school. So absences, I do believe, lead to a lot of the problems with earning credits. So back to the middle school. So only nine students began the summer learning program and two quit after the first week and a half. Thirteen had signed up online, and approximately 25 are recommended by the principals. We've had very low attendance the last two years. The students who attended enjoyed their time with us and had daily time in text, which is reading based on their Lexile level. In order to get better in reading, you have to practice, just like if you're playing a sport. And they also had 95% group instruction if needed, reading instruction, which was based on the science of reading, math instruction, and part of the math instruction was based on Mango Math, which we did order, iReady reading, iReady math, and then we had art with Mr. Joe Meyerfield. We had one student attending for special education compensatory services, which were offered to all special education students. There was a total increase in iReady reading scores of 116 points and iReady math of 52 points. Students received books and other educational items once a week for a total of four times. Cheryl Ware, visit us again this summer. She did a writing workshop, and the students received an autographed copy of one of her books. The program concluded with the students spending a very hot day at the West Virginia Wildlife Center. Elementary. This is somewhat sad, in my opinion. So 198 students in K through third grade were identified through the Third Grade Success Act. These students were either identified in math, reading, or both. I sent letters and applications for the summer learning program. Three students moved, so that left us with 195 students identified. Only 23 students of the 195 attended our program. Looking at attendance as a factor, Larry Lance pulled attendance for me, and 30% of those students of the 195 were chronically absent during the 2023-2024 school year with 18 or more absences. The average amount of absences for those students were 26.6 days. Twelve other students were signed up by their parents to attend, to attend our program and gave grades K through five. Others signed up but dropped out before the program began on June 17th. One student dropped out after the power outage day with three previous absences. With the beginning enrollment of 35, then dropping to 33, we had an average daily attendance of 30.88. We usually limit the number of absences to three during the summer. That numbers started before I began. But with the West Virginia Third Grade Success Act, I felt like I could not really limit days this summer. I felt like we wanted everybody to attend. With that, there were seven students who missed three days this summer, four students who missed four days, and one student who missed five days. The students who attended enjoyed their time with us and had daily time in text, 95% group instruction if needed, reading instruction based on the science of reading, math instruction using Mango Math, iReady reading, iReady math, PE or music. There was a total increase in iReady reading scores of 63 points and iReady math of 119 points. Students received books and many other educational items and STEM and STEAM items once a week for a total of four times. Cheryl Ware did a writing workshop, and the students received an autographed copy of one of her books. The program concluded with the students making their own pizzas at Domino's and enjoying a day at Lewis County Park. Any questions?
What do you think's the main reason, I mean, for the absences? Do you say, is there anything you could recommend that maybe we could get to where it wouldn't have so much absence?
In the program or?
Well, anything. What's your recommendation?
Maybe off record, we could talk. I really think at the elementary level, it should be a three-week program. I think four weeks is perhaps too long. This is my third year being the coordinator, and the first year I was a teacher at the middle school. I think, I know it's hard being a parent. I have a special needs son. I know sometimes it's hard to get your child up, but 23 students out of 195, and your child is identified as needing help. And I know that parents want their kids to have summer, so I think maybe shortening it to three weeks might be a benefit at the elementary level.
Since you started, is this the least amount of students that you've had in your program?
At the elementary level, last year we had a small amount, but there was also Energy Express. So, and they had low, low numbers last summer, too. And I called all elementary and middle school parents before we started to make sure their child was attending, and they all said yes, and that number, we were at 40 when I called just a week or week and a half before we were to start, and then kids did not show up.
I've got one more question. You would suggest it, perhaps maybe go into a three-week program. Some of our colleagues in other counties, do you know what they use? Do they use the four-week model, three-week model?
I know Harrison County did three weeks and no Fridays. I think that is a little too short if you want to see progress, in my opinion. And other counties I know just targeted this year K in one. I think Upsher County just did K in one because by the time Third Grade Success Act goes into full mode, those are the only grades that will be affected. And we did K through five this year, but we had very few fourth and fifth graders, so.
Okay, thank you.
A lot of that is driven by funding as well, what they can afford to pay as far as staffing goes and so forth.
Do you have anything else?
I want to thank you because I know how much work it is.
Thank you.
A lot of work into it. And Cheryl Ware is great.
Cheryl Ware is phenomenal. I always say this story, which is true, and she talks about me because I was, instead of being a big brat like I am now, I was a little brat. I was about five. She worked for my dad at Belington Bank. And my dad said, what are you doing wasting your life here? You need to go to college. And so I tell her, you should be giving me part of your profits since my father encouraged you. But she, she does a great job. If you've never had the chance to sit in on her writing workshops with the students, she does a phenomenal job. She really does. That's why I keep having her back, because she does a great job.
Very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
And I will be going home. Not to be rude, but Aiden is waiting on his mother, so.
I understand.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. Next one, Jane. Do we have delegations, Dr. Stewart?
There are no delegations.
All right. Moving on, would like to approve the minutes from the following board meeting. 6:24, 24 regular session. 7:124, special session. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Second.
Second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, passes 5-0. Onto the consent agenda. Use of building and grounds. Jeremy Bruffy, Lewis County Basketball Association, use of LCHS gymnasium basketball practices July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Wednesdays and Sundays, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., will work around school events and activities. Jeremy Bruffy, Lewis County Basketball Association, use of Robert Blan Middle School Gym. Basketball practices July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, Sundays, 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. Will work around school activities. Do I have a motion to approve this?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to finance. To approve the payroll payment of bills accumulating $3,305,375.32. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adam, I have a couple questions on that.
My apologies. I did not do the discussion points, so we can go back to that.
Yeah.
What do we have, John?
Page 34, 35, 36, and 37 have our register. Wrong check ID.
I've got your document. What was the page numbers again, John?
35, 34.
He's asking about these categories, wrong check document IDs. What's this mean?
I'd have to ask her.
It's what you take from each type of question, so wrong, wrong check ID, that's the triple last off screen.
Wrong check ID.
34, 35, 36, 37. Is that checked that you did the wrong ID or is this just proper protocol?
Mariah's looking at it, Mr. White.
Because there should be the vendor name. I'll have to double check with her, but that should be, I believe, vendor name. It could have been an error when we rolled over to the eighth school year.
Well, you need to play that.
Where is John?
He's on phone.
You need it back out.
Hey, John.
Yeah?
I believe that that might be an error. There's supposed to be a vendor name there. So I have to look and see what happened when she printed that out.
Let's see, there's, there's a check number, no check date, no void date, no vendor.
Well, that's like one giant one. So it would have started on that page. Yeah. It goes through, it's child nutrition, so it's a couple pages. Yeah, so.
For the vendor name.
Yeah. There's a vendor number. Yeah, I'm wondering if there's some error when we rolled over to 45.
I think we need to table this. Don't you?
We've got a motion on the board.
I know, I know. Because I don't know what we're voting on, right?
So can we rescind the motion and then table it?
We meet next Monday, right? I couldn't wait a week till she gets the answers.
If.
How is that?
Dr. Stewart tells us something different.
Mr. Bush made the motion, so he'll have to, he and Mr. Holden will have to agree to.
I'll rescind the motion. Because I'd like to know what, what should.
Are we just going to rescind just the enforce action?
Pages 30.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
34.
I think go ahead and vote on the rest of them?
Yes.
I think it would make the most sense. I agree with that.
Table them ones and then.
Pages 34 through. John, does that satisfy you?
Sure, I'd like to just clarify for K, you know.
34 through 39.
Yeah. Yeah.
If it's just a coding error, I get it, but coding error's a big deal.
Good to move on to the supplement approval?
You need to vote on that.
Okay, on tabling it? Yes.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to table pages thirty-four through thirty-nine until the following board meeting? Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. And should we go, or do we need to go back and vote on the previous remainder of the...
So you can, but the numbers will not be correct on the report because you pulled that information. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Sure I do, yeah. But we, we really should, for the purpose of business, just go ahead and approve that to Mike's point.
Yeah.
And that's fine, I agree with that. This is something I think is correct. I don't want to put down any...
So, so that motion was made by Mr. Bush and seconded by Mr. Holden?
Yes. So do I have a motion to approve the remaining amount of the financial report, omitting those sections that we just voted to table?
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Moving on, financial report, number two, approved supplement schedules effective July one, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on to the personnel section. I am requesting an executive session to discuss agenda item three zero. Do I have a motion to go under executive session, West Virginia Code six, nine, A, and four, to discuss said personnel item?
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Okay, we would like to go into executive session if we could.
Substitute Secretary Lewis County Schools effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four. Do you want the rest of those or just that one?
There's one more.
Do I have a motion to approve?
No, there's E.
What more?
E. Four E.
Yeah, two more on it actually. E, Melissa Warburg, day substitute aide, Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four. And we're gonna do five with that as well, correct? We're gonna do five on our time.
Yeah, please. Do I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
All seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record reflect that I abstained.
I have an abstention, abstention. Next one, ma'am.
Five, please employ the following coaching personnel. A, Mickey Metz, head volleyball coach, Robert Blaine Middle School, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I will be abstention there.
Now, ready for the whole thing?
Please.
One, please accept the following resignations and retirements. A, Joshua Palmer, resignation, JV boys basketball coach, Robert Blaine Middle School, effective July fifth, twenty twenty four. B, Joshua Palmer, resignation, baseball coach, Robert Blaine Middle School, effective July five, twenty twenty four. C, Samuel West, retirement bus operator, Lewis County Schools, effective July thirty, twenty twenty four. And E, Marissa Shanholdts, resignation, communities and schools coordinator, Robert Blaine Middle School, effective July nine, twenty twenty four. Two, please consider and approve the following requests. A, Angel Byrd, approved non-paid medical leave of absence, July one, twenty twenty four through August six, twenty twenty four. B, Angel Byrd, approved non-paid medical leave of absence from August six, twenty twenty four through August thirty, twenty twenty four. C, kindergarten, hire as custodial maintenance at Robert Blaine Middle School. The correction to the posting number, he should have been hired to posting number three eighty, make that retroactive to June twenty-four, twenty twenty four. D, Michael Miller, rescind hire as special education teacher, Robert Blaine Middle School, retroactive to June ten, twenty twenty four. E, permission to post special education teacher, Lewis County High School for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Three, please employ the following professional personnel. G, Mary Lynn Posey, substitute teacher, Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four. J, Stephanie Bruffy-Muffet, school guidance counselor, Lewis County High School, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four, pending background check. N, Alicia Tenney, coordinator, special education, Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four. Excuse me, O, Ryan Dumont, central office administrator, facilities, maintenance, safety and transportation, Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four, pending background check. Please employ the following service personnel. D, excuse me, A, Donald Parks, bus operator slash mechanic, Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four. D, Rebecca Jones and Tiffany Rawl as substitute secretaries for Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four, pending background checks. E, Hannah Linger, Rebecca Jones, Tiffany Rawl as day-to-day substitute aides, Lewis County Schools, effective July seventeen, twenty twenty four. I, Melissa Almond, itinerant classroom special education instructional slash transportation aide, Jane Lu Elementary School, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Jody Masters, itinerant special education slash aide. Autism mentor, Peterson Central School, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Five, employ the following coaching personnel. C, D, Tyler Gump, assistant girls' basketball coach, Lewis County High School, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, pending certification. E, Rocky Schaefer, head boys soccer coach, Robert Blaine Middle School, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. G, Kevin D Atchison, head girls' soccer coach, Robert Blaine Middle School, effective for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Oh gosh, what is that? Eight, employ the following extracurricular personnel. A, Tina Kaiser, summer band camp instructor, Lewis County High School, effective July twenty-nine, twenty twenty four. And number, or yeah, number nine, approve the following parent volunteers for this school year. Have it listed right there. Should be for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. It's Lewis County High School, Ian, Ian Smith.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussions?
Adam.
Sir.
Um, question. Um. Are. Are we providing the postings? Or is there a way that I can look? But like, like I went down through the list and, and for example, coordinator of special education, Lewis County Schools. I, I would have liked to seen that posting before I hired and not, I mean, I can go look at them, I guess, or whatnot.
Absolutely, they're, they're published online. They're published online.
Published online where we can find them?
Yeah.
So if I have a question about what, what a particular job is, for instance, I can, I can go figure that out. Okay.
I find it very helpful when you send it, kind of gives me an idea.
Oh, I always send them out as soon as I post them. Usually post them on the Thursday after a board meeting. Usually post Thursday after a board meeting.
Okay.
And I'll send a, just a short email that says, here's the link to the latest postings. Just has a link that you can click on and read all of them.
Okay, I, I was just curious because some of the jobs I, some of them are pretty self-explanatory, but some of them I didn't recognize quite what they were.
I'm sure you can get involved in that email stream.
You probably can get him.
To where you can get it whenever she does it.
We'll, we'll hook it up sometime.
Thank you. Any construction updates?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
No more construction now. Oh, there is no update. We were supposed to have two construction meetings last week and Architect had to help this year, so we had to cancel that meeting.
Okay.
Moving along.
Thank you very much.
Still your pin line.
I am going to request executive session to discuss ESG energy audit findings. Uh, do I have a motion to go under, or go into executive session under Western Code six nine A four to discuss personnel item involving said, uh, said topic of the per, um, not personnel, of the reports and discussion item?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The time now is seven oh three.
Should we be ready to move on? Make a motion to come out and be checked. We good, Jeff?
I would like to ask Mr. Dumont one thing. I know this is your first day here. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but what was your, what's running through your mind now after you've heard this?
Alrighty. Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
Make a motion.
Second. Any discussion? Unheard. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The time is seven fifty-four. Let the record reflect that no action was taken in the executive session. Next action item, consider approved permission to acquire Energy Services Company. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Now unheard, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next action item, consider an approved agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Harvey Educational Consulting, Roseanne L. Harvey for Special Services Administrative Support, effective August 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider an approved agreement between Lewis County Board of Education and Western University Board of Governors on behalf of Western University and its College of Applied Human Sciences, School of Education, and Clinical Placements, Field Placements, and Internships, effective August 15, 2024 through June 30, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consider an approved memorandum of understanding between Hope Gas Incorporated and Lewis County Board of Education to cover the financial costs related to the Board of Education's purchasing and installation of a new gym floor, new school board, renovation of locker rooms, new trophy case, new bleachers for upstairs, and new public announcing systems, all at Lewis County High School, and any other agreed upon renovations at Lewis County High School.
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Dr. Stewart, any updates?
I want to make sure that we publicly thank all of the folks that worked with summer school. They did a really bang up job with the number of students that we had. Ms. Stonaker always does a great job in organizing all of that. Bus drivers, cooks, aides, everybody pitched in to make sure that our kids had a really good experience. So I just want to make sure that we publicly thank them.
Absolutely.
Board comments. Mike, you have anything?
Yeah, there was a young lady, was it, she in cosmetology over there that got like third place national.
I wasn't at the meeting, I'm not sure.
I had to find out her name, or because like I said, I was on the phone and you couldn't have here on. But I understand we do have that, so I'd like to get her recognized, because that's quite an accomplishment. And I mean, I think she got what, third in the whole state, I mean, the whole United States? That's quite an accomplishment.
Great.
And also, I'd like to thank Sam West for his years of service to the board. When I started out, I started out with Sam. We drove together. And one thing I would like to do, I'd like to welcome Mr. Dumont. He took on quite a job, and I wish you the best of luck, and if there's anything I can do to help you, I'd be more than glad to. Also, and I talked to you about this, Dr. Stewart, next agenda, I'd like to bring it up again about the electric buses. There's been a lot of different things happen since we voted on this. There's been a lot of problems across concerning, you know, safety, and I'd like to bring this up again and put it back up to vote on it again. I understand we haven't signed a contract yet, and we can do this, correct? I think that we owe that to the students for the welfare and the safety of everybody, the employees and everybody involved, and I'd like to put, see that put on the next agenda.
Yes.
And the vote to be voted, discussed, and then vote on again.
One more agree with that?
And that's, that's all. I want to thank, like I said, everybody that was in the summer school. Everybody, I mean, that's, it sounded like everything, you know. There were several kids that did get, you know, some help, so. And the recovery, you know, that's, that's what we're here for, so I want to thank them all for that. That's it.
I'd like to thank Sam West for senior year driving school bus, awful nice guy, and wishing the best retirement. Also like to recognize Bob Thompson, former administrator teacher just passed in our county and recognize Bob for his service to our county as administrator and teacher. He's a good guy.
Okay. Dave?
Yeah, I want to add that condolences to Bob Thompson's family. I worked with Bob for many, many years. Also condolences to the family of Carrie Taylor. She was a cook for several years in the county. And I think most of us know her, her children. So other than that, I have nothing else.
Jimmy?
Yes, sir. I've, I've just a couple of things. Um, first off, I want to thank you all for coming. It was, it was a good presentation. Additionally, I'd like to send my regards to Sam West on his retirement. Sam's a good man. I've known him for, for many years and, and, uh, wish Mr. Dumont luck in his new position. The, the one other thing that I'd like to, to bring up, given that we're on the, at the onset of a, of a new board, an election just being over, this is really my first real meeting, I guess you would call it. Um, I, I have some questions along the way, but, but, but I know that we have different services, like legal services, maybe accounting and auditing services, some things like that. And I, I'd like to ask, um, the board to consider as an agenda item at some point for the superintendent to, to research some costs with some, uh, legal firms out there, some other, some other service firms that we use. Particularly legal firms. I think it's such a, uh, critical time right now in public education. I think Lewis County schools needs and deserves the best. There, there may not, uh, we may discover there's not a need for a change. Uh, I don't know that. But, but I think that, that we need to do our due diligence and, and given that we're a new board, and we are a new board. I know some of you guys have been here before. I think that, that, yeah, it may should be done yearly, but I think it should be done two, every two years at a minimum. So I'd like to request that we, that, that we look at some of those costs out there and, 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 and just see what's out there. Maybe, maybe the same for accounting auditing firms. I don't know what outside accounting auditing firm we have. And I, I honestly don't completely know who does our legal stuff, but I'd just like to, to do some, uh, shopping and cost comparisons and see what's out there.
Dr. Stewart, can you speak to any of that, or is that something that we can have readily attainable?
Uh, so I can request that information. Um, when I started in this position, I gathered that information, uh, and shared that with the board. We currently use Dinsmore and Show as our primary legal consultant. Um, however, we do not have a contract with any legal service, uh, which gives us the freedom to be able to use any legal service that we need. So if there's a situation where there's one legal firm that's more equipped to handle that than another, then, then we can use that. Um, at the time, Dinsmore was not the cheapest, but was not the most expensive. Um, so it was kind of middle of the road and that was someone that, um, I shared with the board that I felt comfortable with because I had a relationship there. Um, but I'll be glad to reach out and get the, the cost for that. As far as accounting and auditing firm, uh, that's acquired every year, that, um, they do an audit for us. And so, uh, we've used the state auditor's office and, um, this year we use Harry. Yeah. Yeah, so that's a bid out process.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo my colleague Simmons. There was a lot of good things that were brought up today. And another thing that just had, had prompted me, and this is, this is policy driven. And, and Dr. Stewart, I'd, I'd like to get your opinion on this too. And I'm thinking about it from my current position. I would like to, to maybe see if we could explore if, if, if everybody would be in agrees to this, some sort of a, a policy to where if somebody calls a Prince Board or somebody at the, at the central office or whatever it might be, that the expectation is that we provide them some response. Not necessarily the answer, but some response within, let's just say, a twenty-four or forty-eight, forty-eight hour period. And, uh, and I get it, people are on vacation, but perhaps, you know, and then will make sure that there's an email. Like you were out last week and you had, you know, you, there was a response that was given. Uh, if, if that's not the case and, and available for everybody, perhaps, you know, somebody else is incorporated in that chain, refer them to this, this person. I, I just feel like that it would be good public service for us to do that. And, uh, I, I just would like to maybe throw that out there to see if that would be something that we could get crafted a by our council and see the sentiments of the, of the rest of the board as well.
I, I would concur, Adam. I think that, that it's important that people get answers, you know, relatively quickly to, to questions. I, I think if, if they don't, everybody thinks you're hiding something and the transparency's not there even though it is. So I think it's, I think it's important for, for folks in the county office and, as best they can. I mean, it's difficult. I mean, because it's, you know, they're on certain day contracts and you can't expect them to work when they're not getting paid. But, but I think getting folks' answers is, is really important.
I'd like to add to that too. I think if you're looking at a transparency issue, you can see clear through to. When you don't hear from somebody, you wonder what's going on. A follow-up that we're working on is the great service to our taxpayers, our students that they serve.
Okay. I don't have anything else. Next meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, is it the twenty-second?
Yes.
Next week, next meeting is July twenty-second here at the board office. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The time, time now is eight zero-